Mr. Baradani, would you make that motion again?
Make motion, Judge, return to open court.
All right, we have a motion to retire in open court.
Second.
Your motion is second, all of the favor, please vote.
Aye.
All of us opposed, aye. We return with no action?
We return with no action in special session and we will return, we will adjourn.
Judge, what about the other matters before we head out?
Oh, oh, no, we do have to report that the fiscal court, Mr. County Attorney, in closed session discussed the opiate litigation action. And we made a motion to be in favor of the bankruptcy plan of Purdue Pharma. And would someone renew that motion in?
So moved.
Motion by Squire Varner, second by Squire Gentry. All those in favor, please vote signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries. We also need to direct the county attorney to elect, to choose to join the Sackler. Part, is it settlement agreement?
Participation.
Participation agreement. As part of the opiate litigation actions. And I need a motion there on. Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Gill. All those in favor, please vote signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the fiscal court is now adjourned. We will now call this meeting of the regular meeting of the Woodford County Fiscal Court to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Squire Taylor.
Here.
Squire Gentry.
Here.
Squire Carl.
Here.
Squire Brown.
Here.
Squire Blacker.
Squire Gill.
Here.
Squire Brown.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Offering our invocation today is Pastor Joe Lauderdale from Living Grace Church.
Father, we're thankful for your time and your presence, Lord. We're thankful for your divine guidance. God bless. I ask that you bless everything the court works on, Lord. This entire community. We have a better community. In your name we pray. Amen.
If you're able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Every meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The floor for any public comment, anyone wishing to address the court or the public. The floor is open. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the special meeting minutes of August 12th. The regular meeting minutes of August 12th and the special meeting minutes of August 22nd. Are there any additions or corrections to any of the minutes? Seeing no additions or corrections, are there any comments? Are there any objections to approving same? Seeing no objections, I'll approve the minutes without objection. I'm going to return to committee reports. I'm going to begin with reports of our departments. And Madam Treasurer, would you mind to begin your report, please?
Tonight's balance is fourteen million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, five dollars and forty-one cents. And we're expecting around seven hundred and sixty thousand in reimbursements for some of the projects that we have paid for. So that'll be coming in hopefully within the next month.
Madam Treasurer, you had a few other items you were going to share with the court?
Yes, we have been seeing an uptick in our online tax reporting. So people are starting to use that, pay via credit card, file their business licenses online. So we have been seeing a good uptick in that. And then I think I had another budget amendment on this agenda for some additional funds that we've received.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions for the treasurer? Seeing none. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Next up is the Jack Jewett House. We have Linda DeRocic.
Good evening. I'm Linda DeRocic, the executive director of the Jack Jewett House Historic Site. And I am here to share information with you regarding the inclusion of Woodford County among the Kentucky counties that are participating in celebrations of our country's 2026 Sester Centennial. America 250 Kentucky is the commemoration of 250 years of American history as seen through a Kentucky lens. The Kentucky Historical Society will administer this program and provide assistance in engaging our diverse community in a variety of ways, which could include but are not limited to special events, education programs, history exhibits, and heritage tourism. The Kentucky Historical Society helps to engage all 120 of the Commonwealth's counties. But it's hard to imagine that any other has a history as rich as Woodford County's.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
2025-8, supporting America's 250 Kentucky mission, forming the Woodford County Committee.
Motion.
Motion by Squire Taylor, second by Squire Brown. Are there any questions for the Director?
Well, this is a comment, just if those of you are aware of the grant that the Historical Society, Woodford County Historical Society got for the relocation of the Crittenan Cabin, it actually was a part of the state funds that were a part of this celebration of 250. So it kind of all comes together for us on that, so.
Yes, I'm looking this against a more clouded, right, to the American 250 Kentucky.
Any questions for? Comment with a motion to approve the resolution. All those in favor, please.
All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Linda. You're more than welcome to be excused if you need to be. Next up, how about Director Bailey and our EMS proposal?
Thank you, Judge. Tonight, I had a couple of items I want to discuss with you. Looking to replace an open slot that we have for a paramedic. It's a little bit different. That's why I brought it to the court. There, as you all know, we have a huge shortage of paramedics and EMTs throughout the state of Kentucky and throughout the country as a whole. So we are looking tonight to replace that paramedic position with a young lady that is under contract at another county for her paramedic program. Part of her expenses to that class, her class costs roughly eighty-five hundred dollars rough in that area. She contributed thirty-eight hundred dollars of it to herself. And then the grant, they had a grant, an HWIF grant for twenty-two eighty-seven, which left that county owing twenty-two eighty-seven. When she was told about her contract, the most that it could cost was the forty-five hundred and seventy-four dollars. But they were, told her she only had to pay back the Bull County, the portion of that county's, which would be twenty-two eighty-seven. We're looking to purchase the contract out because that's where we're at. You can't get any seasoned paramedics right now to move, switch where they're going. Everybody has been raising their pay up to make it more competitive across the board. And people are staying put longer. This individual has been an EMT for approximately four years, worked as a paramedic for the last two months, going on three months. So we're looking to get her in. We did have four other applicants that turned in applications, but none of them really had any experience. We had several of them that came in that had never been in the back of a truck as an EMT or a paramedic. And that's kind of scary to hire somebody like that to put out on the street with no experience. So we are, my request is for the court to allow us to purchase this contract from her, bring her in as a full-time employee, put her under contract with us for the balance of that full amount that whatever it is that we work out that we have to pay out and have her work with us. And if she decided to go elsewhere, she would have to purchase that contract from us. So we're realistically out no money. I've been averaging and tracking what it's costing us to run that position each month without an employee there. And it's costing me roughly sixty-four and eighty dollars a month every time I don't have somebody in that position. So I'm trying to resolve a problem and save money at the same time with that one. That's my first of the requests.
And let me, let me take that up. And let me say, Director Bailey, I want to appreciate you in always looking towards the fiscal responsibility of your department EMS and the court. We do have on the personnel order, the changes that you have reflected regarding that paramedic. But we would need a motion from the court as presented and recommended by the EMS Director to buy out the contract as presented. A motion by Squire Downey, second by Squire Carl. Out on the floor for any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries.
And my second request, as I was telling you, we're having to think outside the box more often than we'd like to. But our run volume is picking up. We're having trouble with the bulk of the staff that we have live out of town. So we're tying up three trucks constantly now throughout the day and the afternoons. And I'm trying to, our part-time EMTs that we have, the bulk of them work for the fire department. So they're all on the same shift. So it leaves me several days that they're not there available to come in. So we have a young lady that works for us that's been our intern for the last year and a half, going on two years, has graduated college. She is working to get into med school. And what we'd like to do is transition to her into a full-time position with us at the station. She would come in at the part-time EMT rate. And we would like to send her to EMT school. They have a EMT school in Lexington that is a boot camp that you can go. It's forty hours a week for one month. So you're getting all the training that you need in that one month to get out. We would put them into contract for that as well to where they would have to work a year for us to pay that because the cost of that course would be roughly around two thousand, twenty-two hundred dollars for that course. That would get them to where they could be there at the office with us Monday through Friday to give me four trucks running, to be able to cover our calls and stuff. That brings in to where if calls come in, my assistant, Ken Berry, can jump on the truck with that EMT, with our assistant administrator. And then if he's out tied up on a thing, then I can go. To where we continue covering the calls to help cover our county better that way throughout the week. Plus, it gives us an opportunity to have an EMT that can work extra for us, that can work the weekends and stuff, that work the shifts that the EMTs are there. Because currently, we're covering all these shifts with either the fire guys when they can or with paramedics that are coming in. But the paramedic, part-time paramedics make a lot more money. You know, they're double that cost. So we're looking to try to, again, cut costs by bringing them in to where we're not spending that kind of money out for it to help us with that program there and help with the other day-to-day operations that we have.
And Director Bailey, the changes that you have outlined and the position that you have recommended is on our personnel orders for approval later in the meeting. Do you need additional approval for the training?
I do. If the court so approves this position, then I would like for them to go ahead and let us get that training established because it starts, we have time. It starts in November and would be done within a month. But we can start that person with training with us immediately on the trucks where they can learn the positions, to what it is, learn the equipment. We can start educating them ahead of time before they get there, and we can do that. We are, that's the reason we started the EMT program at the school is to help filter these kids in to where we don't run into this problem. I've got one of them that came from the high school that's in that, that just graduated her paramedic program. This is her second year. She's been working with us for years. She just went straight through in Eastern and has graduated with her paramedic license now. But she's continuing on with her education as well to become a doctor. So, but the program will work. It's just going to take time to build it.
Thank you, Director Bailey. And since we need to approve that training contingent upon the personnel order, I entertain a motion to approve the personnel orders as presented. Motion by Squire Carl.
Second.
Second by Squire Taylor. Are there any questions or comments on the approval of the personnel order? Seeing none. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the personnel order is approved unanimously. And we also need to approve, Director Freeman Bailey, to authorize and execute any documents related to the training program and plan as presented in reports. Motion by Squire Brown, second by Squire Carl. Any questions? I just want to appreciate your thoroughness, Director Bailey. Thank you very much. All those in favor of the approval of the training as presented and recommended, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, nay. That motion also carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Director Bailey, you want to give a brief report on our EMT course?
I do. We've got that started. We have thirteen students in the class. We had to cap it, though we had several more that after school started wanted to join the program. But we capped it for this year. The students are very eager to learn. They're coming very acquisitive every day that they come in. They have something new, that they're asking, different things. The program has been built different than the other EMT programs out there. We have prolonged it. We've stretched it out to where they have more time to actually take deep dives into the books, to understand what they're learning and the whole concept of it. We've also extended the amount of time they have to do their skills to where they can actually be proficient and really good at their skills when they accomplish that. And the last thing we did was put more time for them to be in the back of the trucks, riding with the staff that we have now to teach them and learn them. The way our program is designed, when these students come out, they'll come out as good as any one-year EMT out there on the street right now. Because they will have enough time built into this throughout the whole year that they'll feel comfortable knowing what they're doing. They, we've stressed the importance of the program to them, that all their classroom work builds into what they're doing as EMTs. So they have to be very attentive to all their classes. They have to have a high pass rate on all their classes. They have to have the high grades to pass because if they're failing one subject in the school, then they have to answer to our program for that as well. So it's a good motivator for all of them. They're really doing a great job.
Thank you, Director Bailey. Thank you, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Director Bailey? Seeing none, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to recognize Director Rick Wade, Maintenance. Rick, if you want me to, I'll go ahead and entertain the motion to reject the bid as recommended by the maintenance supervisor for the Toadvine Enterprises quote and bid for the Community Stadium Scoreboard and Sound System. Is there a motion? Motion by Squire Carl, second by Squire Brown. I would just note that we received one bid. It, we don't have to have a reason to reject it, but I don't think it was what we were looking for, basically. Does anybody have any questions for Director Wade on that? Seeing none. All those in favor of rejecting the bid, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries. We also need to authorize the Director to, Maintenance Supervisor, to seek quotes for the Community Stadium Sound System and Scoreboard and work with any company or vendor that would be willing to provide those quotes. Motion by Squire Gill, second by Squire Brown. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries as well. And your position, I believe?
Yes. Under request of the court.
You may turn on the mic.
To approve a full-time custodial housekeeping position. We do have the part-time person identified, but she's had an injury and unable to start. But in review, I'm having vacations coming up frequently. The person that's retiring is full-time, and I'd like to also fill that with a full-time position.
So I need a motion to advertise and open the process for the custodian position as presented in the budget. Motion. Motion by Squire Brown, second by Squire Gentry. Seeing no questions. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries unanimously. Anything additional, Director Wade?
Yes, sir. Squire Taylor and I have received information that, or news that we can have a lay-down area at the county barn from October to April for the move of the Jack Jewett, or the, not Jack Jewett, Crittenan Cabin. So that'd be a secured facility, so we don't, won't have to worry about that issue. So as soon as they start bringing it down, we have a place to store it.
Thank you. Thank you for that update, Director Wade, Supervisor Wade. Anything additional? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Director Chandler, a flood recovery update?
Thank you, Judge. Briefly, we had our exploratory call with FEMA where we talked about at a very high level what we did in response to and transitioning to recovery in the flood. Just the size of the event, it takes us a while to put everything together. So our recovery scoping meeting, which is the first face-to-face with that group, is not until September the 10th. If anybody would like to attend, please message me. I'm happy to send you the invite if you'd like to participate, whether in person or remotely. Yesterday, we received some progress on the USDA buyout program. They sent us the application, the formal application to be included in the program. Happy to report that that was signed and returned to them today. It will go and get converted into the contract that we thought we were receiving as the first step. And within a few weeks, we may be able to bring the residents together to provide them information about what the program is, more importantly, what it isn't, and then advance through the process with anybody that's interested. So there was a report in Lexington media outlet that came out this morning, and it is grossly inaccurate. I confirmed that with my counterpart. And he, with the contractor that they, Franklin County, has solicited to help them because they have an even larger volume than what we're considering. So if you have any questions about that, please let me know. We'll be in contact with the residents. This is good news. And just happy to help if you need anything.
Thank you, Director Chandler. Anybody have any questions for the Director? Seeing none. Thank you. We have Chief Melvin Montgomery with us, chief. The Woodford County Fire Department has been working on a dry hydrant on 3750 Ford's Mill Road. And we submitted that estimate of expenses to you all. There it is. We did have that revised up on a couple items, item four and five in particular, chief. And if you want to just explain to the court what we're looking at?
The list of materials here is just for a dry hydrant in a pond at 3750 Ford's Mill Road. This is my first one doing myself. The first two items you've seen, the strainer and the hydro long handle female adapter elbow, that comes from a manufacturer. The rest of the list on there, you see, it'll be coming from Lowe's. It's a six-inch PVC pipe. It's a Schedule 40, which what the engineer is requiring for us to install. And that's, the 160840 is as close as I can come to an estimate on it. Hopefully, it may be just a little bit cheaper. And this, this location is a great location and for a low volume of money because of the driveway to the farm is right beside the pond. So there's no, there's no roadwork or anything. It's pretty much just, we just have to dig the edge of the pond, put the pipe in, and then fill it back in. I've talked to Bo Wilson and Rick Hartley. Both said they would assist with, Bo's going to help with digging it out. And Rick said he would help with getting the pipe installed. So that's a big savings there, not having to hire a plumber or contractor to dig it out. So that's going to be a big help, too.
Thank you, chief. Excellent. And is the fire district good to go ahead and move forward to purchasing the expenses and then just invoice us back?
Yes.
So I would just entertain a motion to approve the dry hydrant estimate as presented by the Woodford County Fire Protection District and that authorize the fiscal court to pay any invoice upon receipt for the work done for the dry hydrant.
So moved.
Motion by Squire Varner, second by Squire Downey. Are there any questions or comments? I would just say that this is a budgeted item that we put in our county budget to try to address these dry hydrant issues that the fire department is leading. We really appreciate y'all's leadership and hard work, and we're glad to partner with you on it.
Yeah, thank you all. And I had one on Oregon Road, but it didn't pass inspection. The engineer wouldn't pass it for a few reasons, and so we didn't get that one. But, so we've got one, but we've been working on this for about four months now. And one of them I'm working with is Logan Stevens that you all have been dealing with on the buyout stuff down there. He's one that's part of us helping us out, so.
Well, thank you, chief. All those in favor of the motion on the table, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. Yes, sir. There you are, Madam Clerk. We had a email approval of the county attorney's review of the Oklahoma contract on August 19th, 2025. I need a motion to ratify that.
Motion.
Motion by Squire Taylor.
Second.
Second by Squire Downey. Are there any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of ratification of same, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries. Which brings me back to our committee reports. And our Contracts and Leases Committee met prior to this meeting. And the first item of business that we took up was a routine item of business to renew the Weiss lease for a one-year period. That passed as a recommendation of the Contracts and Leases Committee. I do need a motion to approve that recommendation.
So moved.
Motion by Squire Downey, second by Squire Gentry. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries.
I just wanted to know.
Yes, please.
I abstained on that as a family member on the.
I just wanted to note I abstained on that as a family member on the WISA board.
So Squire Taylor has a family member on the WISA board, and therefore he has noted his abstention on that lease renewal. Please note that for the record, Madam Clerk. Thank you. I'll give you more time in the future, Squire Taylor. Sorry about that. We moved on to the Fair Board lease, and we had a motion to present the terms of the Fair Board lease to the Woodford County Fair Association. And if we could not, if we're not able to secure a lease, then we would recommend terminating that lease. Is that the motion, Squire Varner, sir? Would you renew that motion for a full recommendation of the full court?
Yes, sir. I so moved that we move forward presenting a new terms of lease to the Fair Board and give them 60 days to agree. And if, if no agreement is, we move forward in termination of the lease.
There's a motion and a second on that item. Are there any questions or comments before we take a vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay. That motion also carries unanimously. Following the Contracts and Leases Committee, we moved into Committee of the Whole. We went into closed session to discuss opiate litigation. And as this meeting, right before this meeting began, we reported that we approved the County Attorney to opt in to the Sackler Participation Agreement. I should have written that down the first time. And that vote was unanimous, so we will, Mr. County Attorney, you will opt us in to that. And we also voted in favor of the Purdue Pharma Bankruptcy Plan and the county's participation in that as well. Mr. County Attorney, would you have anything additional on those items to share?
No, Judge. In light of that, I will email them the court's vote so that they can proceed to include us. Thank you.
Thank you. And then a important item in executive session, we looked at the, the purchase of the Yokohama Building. The City of Versailles, the Woodford County EDA, both voted to sign and execute the purchase and sale agreement for the Yokohama Industries transaction. And so there was no vote taken in executive session. So I would entertain a motion now to authorize the Judge Executive to sign and execute the purchase and sale agreement as presented for Yokohama Industries for that transaction. There's a motion? There's a motion and a second. I'm opening up the floor for any comments or questions thereon. Seeing, yes, Squire Gentry, sir.
I'll just say that there's no risk involved within the first 80 day, 180 days. So I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you, Squire Gentry. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on the table to authorize the Judge Executive to sign and execute the purchase and sale agreement for the Yokohama transaction, please vote and signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Squire Taylor?
Aye.
Squire Gentry?
Aye.
Squire Varner?
Nay.
Squire Carl?
Yes, sorry.
Yay.
Squire Blackburn, Squire Gill?
Nay.
Squire Brown?
And the motion carries, four to three. Thank you, Members of the Court. Thank you, Mr. County Attorneys. And that was the total sum of the Committee of the Whole actions. And we will move on to General Orders and Unfinished Business. The claims, the bills to be paid by this county are before you. We need a motion to ratify the August 20, 2025 email approval of the Sheriff's Visa in the amount of $89.71 and claims using asset forfeiture funds in the amount of $21,385.63 as presented. Motion by Squire Brown, second by Squire Downey. All those in favor of ratifying same, please vote and signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay, and that motion carries. I need a motion to approve the transfers as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Squire Gentry.
Second.
Second by Squire Gill. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. That motion carries. Our personnel order was already approved. We do have the revised Flex Funds Agreement and Resolution to include Shore Acres Road, Mr. Peckney, and authorize the Judge Executive to sign any and all of those documents. Is there a motion to approve same?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Brown. Does anybody have any questions or comments thereon? Seeing none, a motion to approve the revised agreement and the resolution. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay, and that motion carries unanimously. Let me, let me return back to, before we do the proposed second reading of the Order, Ordinance 25-10. Let me ask, we have our Road Supervisor, Supervisor Wilson, did you have a report for the court? And Joe, you are next. Thank you all. Sorry about that.
We're just going to request that we get the revised Flex Agreement approved.
Okay, well, we got that done, so. And you want to just mention some of the paving updates for the court?
We've got, uh, Florida Ward Rhodes, who was working on, uh, Four Acres turned out really nice. And it's like super lightweight now, you know, it's hard what it was, yeah. But we're working on Buck Run now, Eftner, Oregon, Watch Ferry, Germany. Most of these are patch jobs, but like I want to work in, but it's pretty extended piece of road, but it's really bad, you know. I'm sure some of you seen it a while back, where people was on Facebook talking about shocks, getting to work out. Well, they were, you know, it's due with the winter and all the water we've had. It just wiped them out. So it's, our need to be paid.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Road Supervisor. Any questions for Supervisor? Yes, Squire, go.
I just want to thank you for fixing that culvert on Hunter Town Road that where it was sinking down and people were hitting it. You fixed that within a day, and then Dry Ridge Road, I called you about that. It was fixed that afternoon. They were very happy. Thank you, thank you.
Mary Ann, that was a tough job. I just explained this to you. You got a real light dip. I mean, it wasn't bad enough. But when you try to go back and fix it, you got to keep from making a speed bump. So it's really tough to get it right. And hopefully, when you get it that bend, sometimes it's hard to make it mine. So we give it our best shot.
Well, they surely appreciate it, the people that live out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Squire Gill. Other questions or comments for the Road Department? Yeah, Squire Varner, you recognize?
Thank you. I want to thank you along with Mary Ann for Dry Ridge Road. Thanks.
Thank you all. Thank you. From Recycling and Solid Waste?
Just coming up to give a report. We had our river sweep last weekend, and we actually had a great turnout. Had a little over 30 volunteers come out along with the Road Department, and we were able to get over six tons of trash out of the river this year, which is about four or five times more than what we've got in the past five years. So I know a lot of it was, you know, the flood debris and stuff, just what got washed out. But they worked real hard, and we got quite a bit out of the river, so. Also wanted to remind everybody that September 20th, we have our hazardous waste day coming up at the recycling center. So we'll be closed for everything except for all the chemicals, paints, and all that that day. But we're gonna, it'll be in the Woodford Sun next week and the following two weeks after that.
Thank you, Joe. We really appreciate it, and I would echo your comments that the clean sweep, it was an important year to do the clean sweep right. Squire Gentry and Squire Downey, thank you all for participating, and it was a successful day, to say the least.
It turned out great.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Any other agency or department wishing to give a report or address the court? Seeing none. We'll move on to the proposed second reading of Ordinance 2025-10, the General Orders of Taxation. Is there a motion to approve second reading of same?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Gill, second by Squire Taylor. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Mr. County Attorney, sir?
Thank you, Judge. This would be the second and final reading of that ordinance of general taxation for the tax year 2025 in Woodford County, Kentucky. Total assessment of all real property, including new property subject to ad verum taxation within the county as of January 1st of this year is $3,574,753,678. And additionally, the value of real estate for public service companies in the county is $17,177,042. The tax rate of 5.90% is proposed for 2025 and would generate county revenue of $2,109,105 and would require a public hearing, but not subject the tax rate issue to a recall vote. At your regular meeting two weeks ago, you moved to adopt that rate of 5.90 cents per $100 of assessed value of both real and personal property. So be it ordained that there is hereby levied and imposed that tax of 5.90 cents per $100 of assessed value of both real and personal property located in the county subject to general taxation as otherwise dictated by adoption of this rate and is set and established by the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Tax rates are also levied and imposed at the rate of cents per $100 of assessed value on property in Woodford County as follows: Your bank deposit rate, .025; your motor vehicle, 9.4; and your watercraft, 9.4. This being a second reading, this ordinance is final, although it does need to be published in summary form within 30 days.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you, Judge.
I would like to return back to the claims. The bills to be paid by this county are before you. We have our bill list. Are there any questions or comments on any of the bills to be paid? Are there any objections to any of the bills to be paid? Seeing no objection, I will approve the bills to be paid. And I'd just like to make a note that we had an open records request from an employee of the Republican Party of Kentucky for all of our bill lists from now to 2023. We are happy to share all of that information with the requesting party. And also, once we complete that, we will put that online for everybody to see. We are a transparent organization. Our audits are good, our financial controls and the work that we do is always open to inspection and above boards. I just want to make that note. Moving on to new business, we need to propose the first reading of a budget amendment number two, Ordinance Number 2025-12, realizing unbudgeted receipts in reference to good fiscal management in the amount of $16,000 for emergency roads, road funds to repair Buck Run Road, particularly sections that were damaged by the flood. So I need to have a motion for first reading of Ordinance 2025-12, the Budget Amendment Number Two. Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Brown. Are there any questions? I would just like to say, Gail Smith at the Road Department did a wonderful job in working on securing these funds. Thank you, Gail. Yes, Mr. County Attorney.
Just so there's a full understanding from the public, Judge Kay received a letter from Bobby Joe Lewis, former Anderson County Attorney and now Commissioner for the State Department of Rural and Municipal Aid, approving the $16,000, and apparently, they have already begun the process of half of that amount, $8,000, and then the other half will be sent upon notice of completion. So this budget amendment would reflect the receipt of that $16,000 for this cycle.
And Mr. County Attorney, if I could also say that we need to put the second reading as soon as we possibly can due to the fact that we are not able to pave those roads until the budget amendment is fully adopted. So if there is, this would be one instance where we might not advertise this twice.
So we will simply set that for our next meeting?
Yes, Mr. County Attorney, if that would be good by you. So we have a motion on the table. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Mr. County Attorney, sir?
Yes, thank you, Judge. This will be a first reading of that budget amendment for the current fiscal year to reflect the increase in your receipts by virtue of $16,000 road aid emergency funds for Buck Run Road. Obviously, there will be a like appropriation in that amount from the project. This being a first reading, we need to have a second reading, which will occur, I guess, September 9th. And then that will conclude that process.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you, Judge.
The Fiscal Court has received the Zoning Map Amendment denial from the Woodford County Planning Commission on August 14th, 2025 in relation to 2705 Scotts Ferry Road. Given the fact that the Fiscal Court just received this denial, there will be no action taken this evening. The Fiscal Court, under the statute, has three options. They can uphold the decision of the commission. They can overturn the decision of the commission. Or they can take no action, and in 90 days, the decision of the commission would stand as final. There'll be no action this evening as we were allowing the Fiscal Court to review the record. And I would say to the Fiscal Court, and I think the County Attorney could support me, the only thing that this Fiscal Court can consider in this matter is the record that you have received. Nothing additional. That is the sum of that business. We'll move on to.
Judge?
Yes.
May I ask, I might be out of line, but if they have looked at it, could we vote on it tonight, or we got to wait till our next court meeting?
Mr. County Attorney, sir?
You, here are your options. One, I always suggest, and I don't know if all of you have yet had an opportunity to review this. You should not vote unless and until you have had that opportunity, so it's an informed and educated vote. If you all have done that, then it would, then it would be appropriate.
That's the only thing I'm asking.
Yeah, if they haven't done that, then it wouldn't be. The only time a motion would be absolutely necessary is if it's going to be a vote of the court to override the recommendation and approve the requested zone change. That would require a vote, and any time you move to override the recommendation of the commission, it takes a majority of the entire court. So there have to be five affirmative votes, whether you have, like tonight, we simply have a quorum. We don't have everybody here. It would take five votes. So, and I think that's why the judge was just basically saying, we've, it's, you've accepted it, you have it. Nothing needs to be done tonight. But again, your request is, could it be done? My response would be, it only should be done. It should only even be taken up if everyone is comfortable going forward in some form or fashion tonight. And realizing you all just got this, I think their vote was what, August 14th or something like that? So, and again, I don't know what your motion might be, Squire Brown. The only affirmative, the only time a motion would be necessary, and I'm not asking you for what your position is, would be if you're, if someone is intending to make a motion to override that recommendation and approve it. And if it's going to be that, you're going to have to state what it is you base that upon, that you find it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, that sort of thing. And I would be happy to talk to any of you and go over that statute with you in the event that that's something you want to consider down the road. So it, it, it might be a little early for what it is you're asking, Squire. Because I don't know that the magistrates present could all confirm that they are prepared to proceed, having reviewed that record.
That's what I like to ask them, if I may, and I understand if they hadn't, because we don't want to do something that they hadn't.
Yes, sir. Squire Gentry?
I personally would like more time.
132 pages, I'd like to make sure I have enough time on it.
There's no objection. We'll proceed to take this up at a.
Our next court meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We move on to the outside agency tax rates. We have the acceptance of the 2025 Library District Tax Rate as presented. Motion by Squire Varner. Second by Squire Gentry. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. That motion carries. We need to accept the tax rate for the Public Health District for 2025. Is there a motion? Motion by Squire Carl.
Second.
Second by Squire Downey. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries. We also have to approve the twenty twenty-five Property Tax Rate Resolution for the Woodford County Public Health District, uh, and authorize the judge executive to sign those documents. Is there a motion to approve same?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Carl, second by Squire Taylor. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously.
Judge, can I give those of you on the Board of Health a shout-out for...
Yes.
Uh, Judge chairs it, Squire Carl's on it, Squire Gil has been on it. Um, that board has never raised that rate from, from its inception, and it remains the same. And they are well-functioning, and they are sound financially, so I think that's credit, uh, to everyone currently on, uh, uh, Health Board and those of you who served previously and fiscal court members who served previously, and county judges previously who chaired it.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
I have done a good bit of here and there, Madam Clerk. That's all. We, we, we still managed to keep everything in line. Excellent. I'd move on to announcements, uh, magistrates. Um, would you like me to start with Squire Brown?
That's okay, Judge, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
No, thanks.
Thank you, Madam Gil.
Uh, just, I wanted to thank Joe and the recycling center, and Bo and his team again, and everybody for, for the river sweep. A great turnout, and obviously a lot needed removal. Um, and then next Saturday, uh, September sixth is Twilight Festival, uh, twelve to noon downtown Versailles. Um, weather permitting, should be bigger and better than last year. Thanks.
Thank you, Squire Downey. Squire Carl?
Uh, yes, Judge, on the same day, September twentieth, the recycling's doing their household hazardous waste aid, food pantry is also doing their food drive that day. So, when you're going to drop off your stuff, you can drop off some food donations. Yeah, I mean, hey.
Thank you, Squire Carl. Thank you for that notice. Squire Varner, sir?
Thank you, Judge. Uh, just, uh, uh, wanted to, the, the ones that didn't attend, the rodeo was a great success again. I think everybody had fun, weather was perfect, uh, harvest season has started, so, uh, farmers are out on the road moving wagons and, and, uh, so just be aware of that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Squire Gentry.
I just wanna say happy anniversary to my wife. Nineteen short years today.
Congrats. And, um, I'm sure we'll all wear the same shirt next time, gentlemen. Squire Jalen?
Judge, I just wanna, uh, with Labor Day coming up on Monday, wanna wish everybody a Happy Labor Day, and, um, I wanna recognize those that, uh, fought hard to have, uh, our, our forty-hour work week and, and many other rights and protections, uh, for working people in, in America. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. County Attorney, sir?
Judge, all I would say is, last week, uh, I attended in part the, uh, Woodford County, or the, uh, State Prosecutors Conference, uh, which is Commonwealth Attorneys and County Attorneys, and I see a number of county attorneys I've known for years, and I've, I've met some new ones, and we all talk about what we're dealing with, and we inevitably talk about fiscal courts and, and our relationships. And let me say, after hearing some of those horror stories, how thankful I am to be the Woodford County Attorney and associated with the Woodford County Fiscal Court. So thank all of you all. That's all, Judge.
That, that's, that's high praise, Mr. County Attorney. Thank you. Um, I would like to thank all of our county employees on this Labor Day for all that they do to keep us running. Uh, this court does a good job in supporting our county employees, but they do the hard work, they're on the front lines doing the services to our community, so I wanna give a big shout-out to our county employees. We're sending our love and prayers to Logan Duke, uh, our Road Department employee, um, uh, who was, had an injury and is still recovering from that. Uh, we wanna send our thoughts, thoughts and prayers to Dean Tipton and Teresa Tipton, who lost, uh, Dean's dad and Teresa's, uh, brother-in-law, Mr. Philip Tipton, passed away. We send our, our prayers and condolences to the Tipton family. Um, I wanted to begin this meeting by honoring Ms. Sandra Chilton. Do we have that slide available?
There we go.
Uh, Sandy Chilton was a, uh, dear member of our community. She served in so many capacities, in, including her role in the Women's Auxiliary at Post Sixty-seven of the American Legion and on the Woodford County Fair Association Board, uh, in addition to many other, uh, worthy activities, and, um, we send our thoughts and prayers to the Chilton family, the Fennell family on their loss, uh, former, former interim judge executive and magistrate Gary Fennell's sister. So if I could honor, uh, Ms. Sandra Chilton with a moment of silence, please? Amen, and we adjourn tonight in honor of the great Sandy Chilton. May she rest in peace. God bless you, and may God bless Woodford County.